Sorry, I have an unclickable.
You guys ready? We all good together? All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome. If everybody could take their seats, and as has been our practice this year, we'd like to, before the meeting gets started, we'd like to invite a member of the community to lead us in prayer. Tonight, we have Pastor Brandon Shattuck, if you'd like to come to the front and speak clearly over the top of the microphone.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for this day, that this is the day that you've made, and we do rejoice, and we're glad in it. And Father, your word says that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord, and you mold it like the river whichever way you please. Well, Father, we don't have kings here in America. You've ordained us to have representative government. And so, Father, we pray that you mold the hearts of these members of the council tonight, that you lead them and guide them and give them wisdom. We ask that your Holy Spirit speaks to them and guides them as decisions are being made for the people. Father, we thank you that you love the people so much that you gave us Jesus as your only son. And Father, we just ask that you put that heart on the inside of each and every one of these members, that they love these people like you love these people. And Father, we just pray for wisdom over them tonight as decisions are made, and that they'll hear your people and represent them accordingly. Father, we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair notes that a quorum is present, and so we will open this meeting of the Marshall County Council, our regular business meeting for April 11th, 2024. Note to the public, later in the agenda, as has been our practice this year, we will be looking at a consent agenda, which includes additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations. Those are advertised as required by law in the local media, and there is a copy of that agenda on the table in the back of the room, if anyone would like to review that. Before we get on to those on the schedule, this is the opportunity for members of the public to offer input on agenda items, and I do notice we have a number of first responders who are here with us tonight. We're very glad to have you here. If you are wanting to comment on funding for emergency services, that is on the agenda for tonight, and so this would probably be the proper time to make any comments that you'd like to make on that item. So are there any members of the public that would like to address the council on agenda items? All right, hearing none. Up first on the agenda, we've got Sheriff Matt Hassel.
Good evening, Sheriff, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Here before you today, a while back, I discovered we had a fund that said K-9 Fund, and I asked Tori to kind of look into it for me, and the fund does have money in it, but Tori discovered it was never established by ordinance, and we believe it was in 2011 when we were taking donations for a new canine for the sheriff's department. As far as I know, the sheriff's department's the only department that's ever had a canine, so in the county, for the county anyways. So tonight, simple, we have an ordinance written up, and it's been reviewed by, I believe Jim Clevinger reviewed it, and I'm asking the council to approve this so we can establish that fund, and any donations that we get from now on will go into that fund, and then will actually be part of the budget process. So much will be divvied out for training, so much for vet bills, so much for dog food, you know, canine equipment, basically that kind of stuff.
All right. Are there any questions from the council? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the sheriff's request in ordinance 2024-14 establishing a fund for the canine donation.
Second that motion.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mr. Patterson, to approve ordinance 2024-14 as presented. Is there any debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. And if it's okay with the rest of the council, I'm waiting on Mr. Labin to arrive. Mr. Garner, would you be all right with moving up your position on the agenda and giving your report now? Perfect, thank you. And we'll be right with you, John, as soon as Jack's report's finished, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening.
Evening.
I have my quarterly report that I handed out to you guys. Typically, I only update the county commissioners on that. That's been the standard protocol, but I figure it's probably good to come before you guys as well, at least yearly to do one of these, since you are the fiscal agent for the county. So just like to go through a couple things. Some of this is new, so if you did hear anything at the commissioners' meeting, I've added stuff that's happened since that event as well. Okay, so incidents and responses. January, lot of snow, winter. It was my first winter as EMA Director, so a lot of fun communicating with Jason Peters, communicating with people at our 911 center, what's going on in the county. In January, there was also a bomb threat at Culver High School that I was in communication with the folks down there. The threat ended up not being credible, but there were 100 threats made across the state that day, so Culver was not an isolated incident. The state wanted to know what was going on, so active in that. February 15th, there was a fire hazmat situation near Culver. I was requested by the Culver Fire Department and by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management to assist there. They were concerned about some hazardous material leaking into the groundwater, so I was able to go there and help with the reporting. And then another big thing, the solar eclipse that happened last week. Thankfully, we didn't see much of the chaos that was predicted, especially down south in the state, but we did have some traffic backup on Highway 31, and from what I heard, there were no complaints about people going into the ER because they had holes burned into their eyes. That's a good thing. Glad we got some public awareness on that. As far as grants go, the 2023 EMPG grant, which funds up to half of my salary, we've got that fiscal and program report turned in. There was one grant adjustment we did have to do because of a spending shortfall on that. We couldn't match the full amount that we said we would match. That is because last year, when Clyde Avery left and I took over, there was about a three month gap between us, and so no salary was being paid out. So we did not get the full $30,000 we requested. It was $27,000 something. Just that's the discrepancy if you come across that. I do want to reiterate that we have not lost any federal grants. I've seen that floating around. No federal grants have been lost under my administration. It's just not true. Training and exercise, I participated in two HSEEP compliant exercises. I got to do one of those a year in order to be kept up with what the state wants me to do. One was actually done today with the District Healthcare Coalition. We simulated a chemical release at a train derailment that would happen on Oak Road by the Dairy Queen on the Friday of the Blueberry Festival, and the plume going toward the Blueberry Festival. So we talked about how our community would respond to that, particularly the healthcare industry, so that was really rewarding. And in June, I'm privileged to host the Indiana's North Region Tabletop Exercise, which has a similar theme as the healthcare coalition's one, so I'm excited to that, and once we have more details about that, I'd be happy to extend invitations to you guys as well to participate. Community outreach, I've been very active on the Facebook and Twitter slash X pages, which is something that we didn't have before I took over, so I'm glad to be able to get the information out to the public in a way that pretty much everyone disseminates information here in Marshall County. I created an email list for stakeholder updates, so notifying people what's going on, especially with the winter weather, that was really helpful. I've done a couple media hits with Max 983, Pilot News, WTCI. Appreciate all of them. I spoke at the Volunteer Fire Association. I've met with several town and city elected officials in the county as well lately. Glad to be building those partnerships between the county and the city. Sent out several press releases. And then for a few other things of note, I've been keeping up with all the radio and web EOC tests, participating in all the district meetings, healthcare meetings, the EMA meetings. I host the continuity of operations plan meetings for the county as well, so been active with that. Lot of the quarter was dominated by the solar eclipse, so a lot of calls with the state on what's going on with the eclipse, including the day of, just providing situational awareness to them. We had our EMA Advisory Board meeting on March 21st. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Cox for serving on that board. We have struggled in the past to get quorums on that board, but for my first time, and I believe the first time the EMAs had one since before COVID, we did have a quorum at our last meeting, so I'm very excited about that. Councilwoman Cox has been at every advisory board meeting since I took over, very thankful for her input. She's awesome. A few other things, had a meeting with the National Weather Service. I ordered 500 eclipse glasses. Those were first distributed to local police and fire departments, kind of what the state wanted me to do with those. I had about 150 left over. Those were turned out to the public, and we were done with those in two days. Everyone came by and picked theirs up, so glad we were able to get that out. A lot of people kind of pushed that off to the last minute, and then the week before realized they needed eclipse glasses, so happy to get that to people because all the stores were out in town. And then the last thing I put down on there, we, or I started updating the county's comprehensive emergency management plan. That has not been touched since 2017. There's a lot of revisions that need done just for regular maintenance. There's been a new ESF added. That probably doesn't mean much to you guys, but I promise it's important. So we're going to be rewriting that, and I'll be having several meetings with all the localities on how they are going to be able to assist, on some nonprofits, other entities, and we're going to get that rewritten and better serve people in Marshall County with that. And then the last thing I did want to add here, I know it's going to be a hot button issue, but in regards to the public safety lit tax, I'm not advocating for the tax, I'm not advocating for you to vote down a tax, but our fire departments are struggling, our EMS is struggling. They do need some support, whether that's through the tax, whether that's through my department having an increased budget so we can help them, which is usually the case in a lot of other counties, but frankly, my budget doesn't allow for much when it comes to helping out the fire department. So I just appreciate if you guys would take into consideration helping them out in whatever way, whatever avenue that you guys think is the best. Are there any questions that you have for me?
You just mentioned your department could somehow help out with the funding of these guys, or what?
Yeah, so a lot of other EMs across the state, they have larger budgets that they're able to say, like, we will provide this training opportunity for you guys that costs a lot of money. We will provide turnout gear for your department if you're struggling. I really don't have the funds to do that. Either way, if you raise a tax or it comes from my fund, it's taxpayer dollars, so I frankly don't care one way or the other, but they need to have more support.
Is there grant money out there for that?
We've looked for grants, and I know the guys back there are also looking for grants. A lot of grants are not coming out right now that specifically affect that, but I keep a close eye, and the state always forwards stuff to me as well that they see come across, and so we're looking, but we're struggling.
Any other questions from the council? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're always very detailed, that's for sure, so thank you. You guys want to do the consent agenda now, or? All right, let's go ahead and do that. As I mentioned earlier, with additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations, the council has been considering those en masse if they are non-controversial. So at this time, are there any members of the council that would like to separate any individual additional appropriations or transfers for individual consideration? And hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, and I will second it.
All right, we've got a motion by Mrs. Cox to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the consent agenda is approved. All right. Yeah, I might as well just do the minutes while we're on it, so. Is there a motion on our minutes?
Motion for the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Masterson to approve the minutes from the Thursday, March 14th, 2024 meeting. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the minutes are approved. All right. Mr. Grolik, sorry to delay on that. I just thought we might get into some taxation questions tonight, and I figured I wanted to make sure I had an expert here, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. And I want to say thank you for bringing the attention to this issue that is obviously now much in need of attention.
I would like to preface this presentation that I am not here representing the coroner's office. My coroner's budget is fine. I appreciate the support from the council. But I would like to talk with you and bring forward some discussion about House Bill 1454 that just was ratified this year, that provides for a creation of a public safety lit, supporting fire and EMS. And God knows that our fire departments and EMS agencies in our county need that support. I've been, this bill, quite frankly, has been buried in a DLGF bill that's 250-plus pages. There's, I think, two pages, if Mrs. Cox found that right, that refers to this, but it's a provision that allows for local county councils to create a local public safety tax. In our county, that would equate to over $730,000 for our local fire and EMS agencies in our county. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but there are eight fire departments, and there are multiple EMS agencies in our county as well. The provision in that bill allows for a 0.01% to a 0.05% tax. Our legislators have gradually decreased our income tax across the state. This year, it's 3.15%, next year it's 3.0%, 2026 it's 2.9%. So our legislators have made some provisions that could truly offset this public safety lit for our county. Our annual income in our county reflects in excess of $14 million. So at the 0.05, that would generate over $730,000 for our county. What does that mean? That means $2 in a $4,000 a month salary, or 50 cents on $1,000. That would create a sense of recruitment and retention for our volunteer fire departments. I will tell you that our fire departments in our county have a passion to serve their communities, not necessarily a passion to raise funds to keep their doors open. And quite frankly, they all have to raise funds, either fish fries, pancake dinners, or breakfast, or whatever the case may be. I've reached out to counties surrounding us. Fulton County, they have two lets, one that supports the jail, one that supports communications. On top of that, they dispersed ARPA money to each one of their fire departments, two of $30,000 apiece, plus bought five 800 megahertz radios for each department in their county. They have six fire departments in their county. Radios today are $3,000 plus dollars apiece. Starr County does not have a lit tax or a lit. I asked how they support their jail. They house state prisoners to help support that. Cosiasko County has talked about it multiple times. I made contact with one of their council members. That's not really gone anywhere. St. Joe County has multiple lets. They generate over $3 million for their fire departments. The city of South Bend and Mishawaka have their own to support their fire departments. Their lit goes to supporting the county police officers pension program and maintaining their, some of their vehicles. Elkhart County has one. Unsure, quite frankly, how it's funded, but I know NAP and E receives over $300,000 a year from that lit. I communicated with the fire chief. That's what I was saying. So I'm before you, asking for you to consider this county public safety lit for our county.
You all right with taking any questions, or?
Sure.
Are any questions from the council?
Just want to have actually a couple off topic. Is the $730,000, that's the max revenue, is that from the max rate?
Yes, it is.
My other question is, is that the max rate looking at what the fire departments need, or is it more, or is it less? I mean, I don't know how to judge what the fire departments need. I mean, just because it's the max rate, could they need more? Could it be a million dollars they need, or could it be half a million? I mean, I...
One of our, one of our biggest challenges in fire and EMS is technology. I'll give you an example. Cardiac monitors for EMS, for example, are $40,000. Their life expectancy is five or six years. Affordable radios. We did receive a grant about 12 or 13 years ago of about $800,000 to equip our fire service with 800 megahertz radios. Those radios that are at the end of their life today. We've applied a couple other times for grants to upgrade those, and we've not gotten that, and that's through a FIRE Act grant from the federal government. So one of the things that this money could be used for is a recruitment and retention program. La Paz just went through developing a fire territory. One of their issues was the dwindling numbers of first responders. I'll give you an example. I'm a district chairman in the Indiana Volunteer Firefighters Association. Our membership has dropped from 18,000 about seven or eight years ago down to 13,000. So our numbers of eager to respond, first responders, are dwindling. So if we can create a program to keep them active and fighting fire rather than generating funds to keep their doors open, that would certainly help. Do fire departments need more? A new fire truck is about $100,000 today. An aerial device is $1.2, $1.3 million. So I think that there's been some money earmarked by you folks or the ARPA group to support Polk Township and Tippecanoe towards new fire stations, if they can get some OKR money. I think that's greatly appreciated, but there's so much that we just need to keep upgrading that that's where we're at.
Mr. Masterson, yeah?
What would be an equitable distribution based upon the wages of the county versus the size of the townships and the municipalities, as far as that would be? How would that distribution come about?
Well, there was a video prepared and presented by Representative Randy Frye that speaks about Representative Thompson developing a formula for that distribution. I reached out to State Board of Accounts, and my email response from those folks was that that distribution policy would be determined by the governing body, which is you folks. Ideally, what I would like to see is that it would be distributed equally between all the agencies, to include Walker and EMS, quite frankly, because they serve the folks in Polk Township.
I guess as I'm looking at the lit tax, where you reside versus where you live, there's a different formula with those taxes?
Well, there was, there was some discussion about the possibility of that money being distributed on assessed value. Quite frankly, that means that Plymouth and Bremen would get a large percentage of that, and quite frankly, they've got a decent tax base, so they have a decent amount of money.
Right.
Not an over amount, but they've got a decent amount. The Bourbons that have to buy used fire trucks, the Tippecanoes that buy used fire trucks, the Polk Townships that have to build their own. the Polk Townships that have to build their own. That's, that's why I would suggest that that money be distributed equally.
Was that the question that you were getting at, Mr. Masterson?
Basically, as it pertains to when you do payroll.
Oh, I see.
It's based, the rate that you charge for what they call the county adjusted gross income tax or the lit, it has a basis of where you are employed versus where you work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there is a little different formula that equates to that. And I was just wondering, you know, how that would work out, you know?
The, the information that I got was off a gateway, and that reflected that the annual income for Marshall County is over $14 million.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that's the folks that work in the county.
Yeah.
I think that's a question I want clarified too, because I've got three sources that say you don't pay income tax based on where you work, you pay it on where you live. So if you work in St. Joe County but live in Marshall, you do not pay the St. Joe County tax rate, you pay the Marshall County tax rate. I've got a-
And I, and I will say that's a question that I actually, I've gotten more phone calls from folks on this issue in the last three days than I've gotten in the last year. And I think a lot of folks have the misconception that if they're working in St. Joe County or Elkhart County, and those folks have a higher tax rate, that they're paying that higher tax rate and that that other county is getting some, some taxes from Marshall County residents. I asked Mr. Lubin to do some research on that. What did you find?
You know, the State Board of Accounts issued, actually, they issued a memo on this in January. And you pay based on where you live. So if you live in Marshall County, but you work in St. Joe County, you still pay the Marshall County lit. So the fact that St. Joe County has a higher tax rate, if you live in Marshall County, St. Joe County is not benefiting from that.
And that's good for some clarification, because I, I had that misconception myself. I think that used to be the way things were done, but I don't think, I don't think it's done that way anymore, obviously.
The only exception to that is if you live out of state. So if you lived in Michigan but worked in Marshall County, then Marshall County tax rate would apply to your, your paycheck. So that, that might be where some of the misconception is coming with folks that, that, you know, live out of county, that that would be the only-
All right. Did that answer your question, Mr. Harmon, or did you have anything?
Well, I wanted to hear another, you know, source on that. I mean, I, I've talked to quite a few people. Darren from Data Pit Stop's a guy we use, and he said the same thing. If you're charged an out-of-county rate that's higher, he says it's because the employer is not properly administering the withholding tax, so. And that does happen according to him, so. And I, and I did see that same memo that you were talking about, it's a Department of Revenue memo.
And that should result in a nice tax return once the state figures it correctly, right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we met, you know, yesterday in the Budget Committee, and, and we were talking about our challenges going forward, because the jail tax will expire in 2027, once the bond is paid off. And we know that, that .25 rate would be an incredibly difficult rate to give up to fund the jail. It's a $4 million operation at least. We don't have that, you know, in our budget to, to cut. So we're going to have to take a look at some of this stuff. And, and I would, I would like to take a, just a good analysis and look at it. And maybe we could have Mr. Dalton, you know, help us out with some numbers and, and discuss it more. But I think it's one issue I, I don't want to say for sure tonight. But I think we need to at least analyze it and give them a good, you know, assessment, so.
I want to just say thank you, Mr. Garlick, for, for your research, because I'm a, I'm a researcher. I want to ask all the questions, and I appreciate you laying all this out for us tonight. I took a lot of notes. And like you said, I've been researching a lot of the House bills, and I'm coming up with a lot of different bills out there that, okay, you can put a public safety tax, and it can go back to the municipalities, the towns, and the county. Or you can put a safety tax in, and it goes to the townships. Or there's like all these different options. And so I asked Steve Dalton yesterday, I said, which one's correct? And he said, well, actually, all of them. The council, if they decide to put a public safety tax, could then look at it and decide which entity you want to go. So I, I have a lot of questions, and I would like to do like an exploratory committee so that we can sit down with Mr. Dalton and ask some good questions and just really explore, like what's going to be best? Not that I'm saying I'm for it or against it. I just want more information so that a good decision can be made. So that's where I am at, because I feel like there's just a lot of muddy waters yet in my research. I don't understand everything yet. I think there's a lot of options out there, and I don't want to jump to a conclusion and make a decision without really looking at all of the options first.
Anybody else? Mr. Fallstitch?
Real quick, Mr. Garlick, do you have a general ballpark on how many radios are in the county that need per fire department or EMS?
There, from the grant purchase, there was a radio purchase for every seat on every emergency vehicle. How many that is? I really don't know. It was $800,000.
It's about, because I spitballed it right around probably about 270 for the entire county?
Probably not far off. Radios today are over $3,000 apiece.
All right. Because tomorrow, kind of trying to get figures and see what it would look like if we did a bulk county buy, and what kind of deal we get. I got a phone call conference tomorrow with Motorola to kind of get an idea. And I even brought the information at the radio I'm looking at, if you want to take a look at it when we get done here tonight. Are there any other brands out there besides Motorola that you guys like within the fire?
There are other brands out there, yes. I didn't answer if everybody likes them or not.
Are there any other brands out there worth taking a look at, so I can get comparative numbers and kind of-
Possibly, possibly, yes.
Okay. I'll sidebar with you after the meeting then?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to just piggyback off of that. Like, I, I appreciate everybody coming in here, and I would really like to know how we could maybe do something like that too, to help out long-term. If we could help bulk buy something that everybody uses, not that they do, but, I mean, however, we could help save some funding there as well. You know, whatever we could do to help support that. Probably can't buy 20 fire trucks, but I mean, maybe something like that with radios too. And I appreciate as much coordination from you and other folks, and I really encourage you to coordinate with us. I am more than open to talking with you folks all day long, and, yeah.
One of the, one of the biggest things that, that really plays into this whole process is recruitment and retention. And the, the public safety lit could be an annual contribution that may very well help with retention. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to communications. Communications is a lifeline of our safety. And some of these folks in the volunteer service might make $3 a call for an emergency call that they go on. And they go into a structure that's on fire that people are running out of. So I think safe, public safety is number one, our firefighter safety is number one.
Mr. Masterson?
The lit tax, we know that it can't go away. So the perfect time, I think, is now to do the study. It would be a travesty for us to reduce the lit tax by the smallest amount and then have to come back and ask for something else. So it looks to me like if the research was done between the towns, municipalities, and the counties to look at the lit tax where we are now, the bonds are going to be paid off. What's it going to take for Matt Hassel to run the sheriff's department and to work in the fire and EMS and that? And another thing I want to say is it appears to me that the towns, the smaller towns and municipalities have had their act together, because some of these people are paying for their own equipment by the things that they're doing in their own communities. And my hats are off to those people. Now, I am a North Township person originally, and I know that there's some horrible things going up there now. But we also know that La Paz is going to have to have its own fire territory. We would not want to live up there and call 911 and not have someone show up at our house. But we also know by delaying things forever and not looking around at other communities to see what works, it's cost us in the long run. So, and I appreciate everything you've done, John.
And I would, I would say, Jim, to, to piggyback on what you said there, one of the questions that I want to see answered in this process is if we do enact a lit tax, how does that impact the folks that have just had their property tax raised in North Township and who have seen property tax increases, not to that extent, but down in, in green and walnut as well? So we want to make sure that we take all those factors into consideration as well, so.
That would be a possibility that you could exclude them from that tax rate? Is that the way I'm understanding it? If you had a tax rate-
What I, what, I've been thinking about this, because, yeah, don't get me started. In the budget process, they do a budget process each year. So they have their max levy that they can take, but we are told, now again, I need to do more research, we are told that they don't have to take in the budget process the full, the full levy. So if that is the case, then maybe there is a, they take less in the budget process. If they're taking part of the public safety tax income, then in their budget process, they take less, so therefore, there would be less on the property taxes. But I think there would need to be some communication and some maybe contracts or agreements, saying that as a board, and, you know, a North Advisory Board, we will not go over this property tax budget if we get this public safety tax, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, all things to look into. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, John.
Right, yeah. Well, I, I will say, again, thank you for bringing this to our attention and for, for kind of starting this conversation to another level. I happened to have a very intense conversation day before yesterday with one of the trustees. And honestly, I've heard people talk about this public safety tax for the last number of years, but I, nobody's really made clear exactly what needs to be taken care of, what those needs are, what the dollars are. So what I'd like to propose is I'm going to contact Commissioner Klotz, because obviously the commissioners voted to ask us to consider this.
I'm sorry, who?
Commissioner Klotz.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the commissioners voted to, to encourage us.
Voted to support it, with the exception of Mr. Klotz, yes.
And again, I think all of us take this very seriously, but I'd like to, to collaborate with them to create a, a blue ribbon commission of sorts that's going to be composed of stakeholders and municipal governance experts to identify the challenges that our departments face, to set priorities among those challenges, to create a strategic and organizational plan, identify the costs, and then identify the appropriate funding and distribution mechanism. Those are all the questions that we need to answer before we go, you know, starting to tax people. But if we were to create a, a commission like that to, to conduct this study, would, would you be willing to sit on that board?
Absolutely.
Okay. I've obviously got some thoughts. I know Mrs. Cox is, is deep in these issues, and so I'd, I'd like to see if you'd be willing to serve on that as well.
I would.
And I know Mr. Harmon also volunteered for that. So I'm going to check with the commissioner, see where they're at on that. And I think, I've never done anything like this before, but I think this is an issue that, that requires this kind of serious commitment, so.
I guess I, obviously, it's, it's never a good time to raise taxes.
Yeah.
And, and I know that, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your interest. I, I just would like for this to move forward in some sort of fashion.
Yeah. And I, and I will say as well, somebody brought up the ARPA money, and, you know, if folks are aware of how that process worked, I voted against a lot of those ARPA expenditures, because I didn't think they were fundamental responsibilities of local government. I wish that the process would have allowed some of those, some of the types of, of proposals that you guys are suggesting to come to us, because obviously, the, the council didn't create the ARPA plan. We just got to vote yes or no on those expenditures. And I think we probably would have favorably considered requests to, to support local emergency services, so. Anything else anybody'd like to add?
I got one other question. Right now, what would you say is the number one priority, number one issue you guys are having that needs to be addressed off the top?
Retention.
Retention? And what is the per-call rate right now?
Every department's different.
Every department's different?
Yes.
All right.
Some departments don't get anything. I think Plymouth gets $15 or $20 a call. Not sure about many of the others.
And I, I was told by one of the firefighters down around Argus that, uh, right now, if you just do weekends for your training as a volunteer, it takes about eight weeks to get your hazmat cert.
Eight weeks for hazmat training?
Eight weekends.
Eight weekends. I taught a hazmat class in Tippecanoe a couple years ago, and it seemed like it took about two months.
Okay.
You're looking at 260 to 280 hours for a firefighter to be trained.
Okay. Is that for a volunteer as well?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
I would just like to say too, when we look at budget time, you know, however our numbers look, if we can make adjustments to help support through our budget too. I mean, I know it's a while off here, but I would like to make fire, EMS, and safety a priority to help out as well when it comes to our budget funding.
Yeah. And I would say my, my closing comment would be, I know that there's a lot of stakeholders that are involved in this. One of the bills that passed in, in 2023, I think you draw, drew my attention to this, Mr. Fallstitch, they have now specifically listed supporting emergency services and operations of emergency services in things that redevelopment commissions can assist with as well. I know that our, from my basic quick look at the income that comes into our redevelopment commissions from TIF districts here in Marshall County, they're receiving about $8 million a year in annual revenue. And I would say there's nothing that a redevelopment commission does that should be ranked above what you guys do. And so I would also, I hope that those folks would be willing to, to consider being a part of this process as well, so.
Well, I appreciate your support. I'm eager to work with you folks and move forward with this.
All right. And I want to, I want to ask you, I know we've, we've all got a lot of things going on right now. There's probably nothing more important than this, so please be a, a burn or saddle or whatever, and, and feel free to-
Trust me.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Up next, we've got approval of Lubin law invoices. I believe there were two of those that I forwarded to you all for your consideration that are still outstanding. Could I get a motion on those?
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept both invoices as presented.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mrs. Cox, to approve the two outstanding Lubin law invoices. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the invoices are approved. We've got a Sender Dalton invoice. I believe the, the most recent one that we received was for $450. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the Sender Dalton invoice.
Second the motion?
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mr. Patterson to approve the outstanding Sender Dalton invoice. Is there any discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. We have an appointment as an alternate for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And thank you to Mr. Lubin for informing us on our right to do that. Let me, let me make sure I've got the right name here real quick. That would be Joe Allen of Union Township, I do believe, has been suggested for us. I've heard good things about Mr. Allen. I've spoken with him on the phone, and he's enthusiastic to embrace this opportunity. Could I get a motion?
I move. We have Joe Allen as our BZA alternate.
Second that.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, and a second by Mrs. Johnson to approve Joe Allen as our alternate on the BZA. Is there discussion? And hearing none-
I was just going to say, I've talked to Joe as well, and I really like him. I think he'll be good, and be a good representative for us.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the appointment is agreed to.
Mr. Bohannon, I have something else that has just recently come up.
All right, Mrs. Johnson?
The one, Marshall County, the, from what I understand, the council has an appointment on that. And I would- And I would like to see what we all think about. Take my pen away.
I know.
We were warned. Is there, is there someone that we are thinking about? Is there someone that any of us?
There, there are two options to go with on this. One of those is to appoint one of us to fill that spot. I think the other one would be to appoint someone that we all trust, but is not a member of this board. Pluses and minuses on those options. What do you, what do you all think? I know, Mr. Masterson, when, when they came and presented a couple of months or a couple of weeks ago, they listed you as someone who had been in, in some participation in, in those activities. What are your thoughts on this? I've, I've never been to one of those meetings, so I, I don't know.
My thoughts as it pertains to what, Jesse.
Is that something you'd like to continue to do? Do you think we should find someone who's not a member of the board to be our appointment?
I think it should probably be someone that's not a member of the board.
I was thinking the same thing because I've been voting for and coming back to the council for money. Then, I don't think that. I think it's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I've got somebody that I had in mind. I have not gotten her all of the information she needs before she's willing to give it a yes or no. I'd like to invite you guys between now and the next time that we meet to maybe check in with some folks that you think would fill that role well and, and come back with some, some suggestions at the next meeting, so. Everybody all right with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, you, you jumped ahead of me there, Mrs. Johnson. We got one more.
All right, did you see the one more?
We've got the, we've got the suggested donation for 4H. We did receive a $10,000 refund in services from, from Purdue for extension services. We all had voted, I believe at the February meeting, to, to give that back to the 4H council. Any update on that, Mrs. Cox, as far as how they're planning on using those funds?
Right. So the 4H council is working closely with the 4H Fair Board, and we just recently received a $50,000 grant from Mobile, T-Mobile, that's going to go for our Possibilities Program. And what that is, is that's a program for, to allow all children of, if they have disabilities. It could be anything from physical to autism to ADHD. Over 8,000 students were, or no, was it, Terry's in the back, I can make her talk. I know. How many students were identified, Terry? Because you were involved in that. Was it?
I think it was.
8,000?
No, I was going to say 800.
No, 800, 800 students were identified that could participate in the program. We're moving forward with it. We had a launch party, and basically it's going to be a mentor program. So individuals, 4Hers who show an animal will be partnered with an individual who might not be able to show that animal. They're going to work together, and there's going to be a special possibility show on Saturday night where the 4Her and the, and the Possibilities 4Her will come together and show. So it's just opening up opportunities. We're also going to do the same thing in our exhibit building. But they are putting in television screens with closed captioning in all of the barns, which will help those that are hearing impaired and also those that just need to read it because there's so much confusion going on in the barns. And they would like to use that $10,000 to go towards our, it's the whole complete system. It's going to be a whole new audio system that's going to go into the fairgrounds. It's about $45,000 investment. They've raised all the other funds, and the $10,000 will be the last piece of the puzzle to be able to put that system in.
And I always get confused on process on things like this. What's the next step in the process on this, Madam Honored?
The next step will be the commissioners. They are to hear this Monday morning. I cannot pay any invoices without some sort of a letter or backup documentation. So that letter, I am expecting Monday morning at the commissioners' meeting. The commissioners accepted that payment, so they will have, if, once they approve that, if they approve that, then it'll go for an additional appropriation. That will be at your main meeting. And if you're giving support to that now, then we can move forward with it Monday.
Perfect.
Wonderful.
Are there any other questions on this before we take a motion?
It's very happy for 4H.
Yeah.
Yes, it's good stuff.
All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we give our approval for the 4H donation of $10,000 to be given to the 4H council. The approval will be done. I don't know how much of an motion, the approval will be done with the commissioners, and then we will actually vote on and approve it.
I guess this is just, it's a motion of support.
A motion of support, okay. I make a motion of support that we support the 4H donation of $10,000.
I will second that.
All right, I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, and a second by Mrs. Johnson to support $10,000 to the 4H council for assistance with their audio visual system. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. All right. Any other items from the council before we move on to public input?
Do we need to vote on the personnel change?
Were there any personnel?
Personnel subcommittee changes?
Or?
Are you looking to change?
Yes, maybe.
If you're looking to, are you, so you're looking to remove a member from the personnel committee and put another member on?
Yes.
Yeah, then you would just need to make that vote.
Okay.
That you're removing one and putting one on.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Harmon? Mr. Harmon, do you want to speak or no? Or I'll just remove you.
I've been having some thoughts. Apparently you've been listening to those thoughts. I'm overwhelmed with some of my duties. I would love to be on this Public Safety Committee. And I was thinking maybe it would be nice to downsize a little bit because I'm on a lot of committees, and I, I would like to maybe not be on one committee. And one I was thinking of is the Personnel Committee.
And you shared that with me. And so, and you shared that with me. So I asked Mr. Masterson if he would serve on that committee with me, and he said he would.
Well, Jim, would you like to serve on the Personnel Committee?
She says yes.
I, I think it's important that an employer.
And Mr. Masterson, or Jim has experience. He's served on this before, so I think he'll.
As an employer too, I think it's good.
Exactly.
So. Make a motion.
Just for, just for clarification, who would, who would be the membership of that committee that if, once we make?
Would be myself, Deb, and Jim.
Okay, the right wing over there. All right, so we've got a motion.
I did make a motion. I make a motion that Mr. Harmon be removed from the Personnel Subcommittee, and we add Jim Masterson.
Second.
Does that work?
All right, I've got a motion.
You don't like that.
I don't like the way that sounded.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, and a second by Mr. Falsted to replace Mr. Harmon on the Personnel Subcommittee with Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion?
I'm voluntarily giving up the position, yes.
That's good, that works. I like that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. Any additional items from the council before we proceed to public comment? Hearing none, any members of the public that would like to address the council on any issue whatsoever, you're very welcome. There we go. And as you come forward, please sit down in front of the microphone, give us your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Chastity Keller. I'm the CASA Director for Marshall County. I have quite a few of my volunteers and some of DCS with us. Just wanted to see you guys vote our transfer of funds over and say thank you. I was told when we started that DCS numbers as of right now are three times the amount they were last year at this time. And they have received 89 calls, hotline calls, just from Marshall County in March. So their numbers go up, our numbers go up. Thank you for keeping our program going for this year. Again, I would like you to think about what we're going to do for next year. I'm starting my budget already. We know by what's going to be left that June will probably be the end. So we'll really need to think about that. Again, thank you.
For the, for the information for the public, and I guess also for myself, as, as your numbers go up, do you expect that there'll be increased funding from the state or?
Well, last year we ended at 20, was it 20 cases, I think? This, so it's behind two years. So last year's numbers, we ended at 30, we ended at 33, but it follows the Marshall County numbers. It should go up, but there's less money to divide between more counties now. And it always pays the state first, their state, you know, to run you first.
Of course it does, yeah.
This was the least amount we've ever received, which was right around 4,000. The most we've ever received is about 15,000 to 18,000. So it's still not enough to continue.
Yeah, and of course, we, we did choose to use the, the, was it the ARPA money or was it opioid settlement?
I believe it's 20,000 of ARPA money and some opioid non-restricted funds to make up that.
So I was, we patched together a solution because we, not because we're not committed to the long-term funding of your program, but because we wanted to find a good way to use those monies. And my expectation is that, that during the budget process, we will make sure that you guys are fully funded for next year. And then, you know, hopefully as we, we will see some new leadership in the judiciary in the next few years. You know, who knows what, what, how they're going to want to structure it, but we will continue, I expect, to, to make sure you guys are funded, so.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
I want to personally thank you for everything you do.
I have a question. Did you, did I hear you right? Your funding is based on a number two years prior?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, if you have a big up, jump up now, you're not going to get funded for it for two years, so.
This even year would be 2026. So they've already figured out, and I should know next month how much our funding is for next year already.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council on any issue? Yes, ma'am?
I am Marlene Mallor, Union Township trustee in Culver. And first of all, I'd like to thank John Gurley for all of his work in bringing to your attention the problems that we're having for EMS and fire. In answer to a couple of your questions tonight, Union Township just bought new radios. We had not gotten any new radios since John, since the grant went through eight, 10 years ago, whatever it was. We got all new ones in. Ours were past their lifetime, so we just bought new ones. We bought 16 new radios, cost us $73,000. I don't know if those are the kind that you're looking at, but I know that's close to what you were talking about. One of the big problems that we're having with ours right now, still our fire department, is mostly volunteer. They get minimal payments for runs they go to or trainings that they go to, but those are just, you know, cents. They're not dollar, dollars. So our fire department is strictly a volunteer, basically. But what has really hurt us is our EMS. EMS has just been out of sight. We've went from a volunteer EMS service, what, eight, 10 years ago, to now we're a full-paid paramedic service. And paramedics are not cheap. All paid service is not cheap any way you look at it. And we've applied to the state to try and get our levy. Our, our budget has increased almost three times what it was in 2018. It's three times higher now than what it was then. We can't raise the levy that much. Our, our expenses for a full-paid service is going up much faster than what we can increase our levy. And we applied to the state to see if there's a special way that you can get more levy. The only way you can get more levy is if your population is increasing. Well, if y'all know in Culver, the population is not increasing. It's become, instead of a family town, it's become mostly old people, me, you know, but anyway. And so our population has decreased in the last 15 years. It's went from like 3,000 down to, I think we're like 1,100, 1,200 people now. So that, threw that out the window. We can't do that either. So there's no way that we can raise more money. And so we either have to go to a fire territory like La Paz is doing, or like Argus has done, or we have to see if we can find help somewhere else. So I just wanted to put some more input in to, to let you know how we're all struggling. So.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, and I, and I will, I will say as we form a, a committee to study this issue, I'm, I'm sure we will have at least one trustee on the, on that committee and probably more, so I'll, you know, we'll be reaching out to you guys, so.
Okay, thank you very much for listening to us, Marlene.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, one last thing I would like to do is I'd like to acknowledge we've got a celebrity in the audience tonight from Senator Young's office. Courtney Pop is here. Do you have any updates from us, for us in the US Senate?
No, I'm just happy to be here and always happy to help, and if there's anything that our office can do to help, please let me know.
All right, thanks for being here. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson, a second by Mr. Falsted for adjournment. All those in favor will say aye. All those opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.